Good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. If you would, please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Just bow your heads. Gracious Father, we come to you. We just take this opportunity, this moment, to stand in awe of you, to stand in your majesty, to thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Thank you first and foremost for the students that come here. Without them, we don't serve a purpose. But Father, we thank you for the lives of the men and women that want to further their education, that want to grow in thought, in mind, in deed. And we thank you that they chose St. Petersburg College. We thank you for the faculty, the staff, the administration, the board members that pour into these young adults and old adults alike that are seeking their education. Father, we thank you for the mission of this college. We thank you for those that serve in Tallahassee and Washington and the craziness that goes along with the legislative process. We ask that you will put in their minds first and foremost, education, that we are a better society, we are a stronger nation because we educate our people. Father, be with us this day. Guide and protect and keep us, Father. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
The pledge is to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to first welcome and invite up Vivian Odell for a retirement resolution this morning.
Resolution. Whereas Vivian Odell began her St. Petersburg College career in 1977 as a secretary for the veterinary technology program. And whereas Ms. Odell proved to be an extremely competent and loyal employee, and in 1979 was given an additional responsibility as staff assistant for mathematics and natural science on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus. And whereas Ms. Odell transferred to the word processing center on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus in 1980, where she served as a word processing specialist for 20 years. And whereas Ms. Odell was promoted to senior staff assistant in the provost's office at the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus in 1999, serving there until 2007, when she moved to the downtown center to serve as staff assistant to the associate provost. In 2014, she was promoted to senior administrative services specialist in the downtown center's provost's office, where she will continue to serve until her approaching retirement. And whereas Ms. Odell has always been a dedicated team member who throughout her career put our students' best interests above her own, she helped develop the Career Service Employee Council and served for three years as vice chair of the council. Upon her retirement, she will have faithfully served the college for 42 years. I think we need to stand and applaud that work. Yes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Vivian Odell, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 19th day of March 2019. Vivian.
Thank you.
She told me to tell you guys, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before Vivian leaves, I just want to thank you for your years of service. I've known Vivian for probably over 20 years, not so much at the college, but when she leaves the college, she goes into her neighborhood and she serves.
Wow.
And I first met Vivian as very much active in her neighborhood association. I was her councilman, then later became her mayor, but she was always very active in just keeping an eye on her neighborhood, crime watch, and all of the other things. And so, yeah, she was constantly on.
All right.
And so Vivian, thank you for your service and all that you do, and keep an eye out on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good job.
You'll see me around.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, and thank you, Ms. Odell. With that, Dr. Williams?
Yes, I am totally proud, elated, excited to introduce you to our new vice president for institutional advancement and executive director for the foundation, Mr. Jesse Turtle. Stand. Jesse has been very intricately involved in our county over the last years. He came from USF. He knows how to build friendships, partnerships, and relationships. He is our best choice, and we're very proud. We went through two searches to find you, Jesse, and so we're very happy to have him here. He's done very good work with the Kate Tiedemann Foundation and Building over at USF, and so we feel that we have a diamond here to help us. Jesse, stand and say a few words.
Good morning, Chair Stonecifer and Board of Trustees.
Morning.
Thank you so much for being here. I am beyond thrilled to be at St. Petersburg College, new advancement, institutional advancement division. I have some really great staff members, and I'm very excited to be here and help build and to take advantage of Dr. Williams and her enthusiasm for St. Petersburg College. She is going to be our storyteller and our main fundraiser, so very excited for that. In the two weeks leading up to my starting, sharing the good news with family and friends and colleagues, inevitably, they said, "Oh, I went to St. Pete College," or "My daughter or son goes to St. Pete College," or "Oh, my sister is a teacher there, a professor." So, you know, telling that story across the whole county will help elevate St. Petersburg College even more than it is, and it will help, obviously, in the fundraising aspects as well. So it's stories and people that people want to invest in, so I'm very excited about that. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Jesse. We hear great things about you, so the expectations are high. We look forward to starting and developing a great relationship with you. Thanks for being here. That moves us to my comments today, and then we'll move to the board members. I'll keep mine brief. I had the privilege of being in Tallahassee last week for just a few days for our annual AFC meeting. Ms. Bello was there as well as a representative from our board, and Dr. Williams, of course, was there, as she is almost every week, it seems like. And I just wanted to thank those that have spent the time in Tallahassee, specifically Dr. Williams. You know, we can never guarantee what the legislature is going to do from year to year. The only thing we can do as a board and as leadership and as the president of the college is to be there. And what that means is developing and building relationships with our leaders in Tallahassee, trying to tell them the story of what we do, how we do it, and why we do it, and why we do it best, or why we think we do it best in the state of Florida. And everywhere we went, everywhere I go, and in Tallahassee last week, it was nothing different, people have already met Dr. Williams, they know who she is, they know what our needs as a college are, and this is critical. You have to be at the table. You have to be in front of everyone who's making these decisions to make sure that they remember and they understand where we're coming from and where we're going, and where the future hopefully is taking us. So I just wanted to thank everyone on the board who's spent time in Tallahassee the past couple of years, but Dr. Williams in particular, you have put the time in. It's not easy to, A, be away from here. This is where you love to be.
Yes.
We know that. And Tallahassee's not an easy place to get to from here. And we are putting the work in, and we'll see what happens, but we're confident that with the continued representation we have with our president, that things will be moving in the right direction for us in years to come. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And with that also, Jesse, kind of to shadow off of what you just said, I was at a Vinoy Business Alliance luncheon, was it last week?
It was last week.
Bridgette was there also. Bridgette and I have just been hanging out a lot together. And Dr. Williams had the opportunity to speak to that group over a great luncheon. And Jesse, what you said is correct. Dr. Williams can tell our story, and she can tell her story well, and people want to be involved, they want to help St. Petersburg College where they can. And again, it's another way we're getting the word out to those who may have forgotten what St. Petersburg College means for this community, and it's little things like that, and they all take up time as we add them together, but they're extremely important and critical for us to move forward. So, thank you for that. It was well received. There wasn't a dry eye in the room towards the end of that, so thank you. Great. And with that, board members, anything new, anything on your minds today? Now is your chance.
I just wanted to welcome Jesse, and I worked with him. I had the pleasure of working with him in the past, and yes, the expectations are huge, but we're very happy to have you here. Also, to just echo what Chair Stonecifer said about Tallahassee, every year I'm proud, but this year I was even prouder than I have been the last several. They do know who we are, and they do know what our needs are, but I think what was even more important than that was how many of them asked us to prepare information for them so that they could go and stick up for us and fight the battle for us, and that was amazing. The other thing, besides Dr. Williams being so well-known that I think helped us a lot, was Erin.
Yeah.
She also was very recognizable, and everyone saying that we were so lucky to have her. So, thank you again for joining the college and being up there and helping represent us.
Yeah, Erin, sorry for forgetting you. And this is why we have other board members up here to keep me in line. And you know what Erin does really well, is make sure Dr. Williams knows what to say and what not to say.
Definitely.
And she sticks to that, which is great. So, we all need someone to keep us in line, correct? Erin, thank you. Mr. Gibbons, any comments before we move on this morning? We'll move to you, Dr. Williams.
All right. Wow, I feel like I have a lot, but I do want to share this. Good news, I found out this morning that SPC received, the Florida Department of Education has approved the charter school program grant for Tarpon.
All right.
And so I'm very excited and proud of Starla and team and Katie and everyone who did that work. So right now, we're going to be doing the planning budget for the collegiate high school. Once that is done, the implementation budget will be approved. The total award should be about $550,000. So that's a big deal for us as we continue to get prepared for opening day in August.
Great.
I was back in Tallahassee the week after we, I mean, in Washington, the week after we left, going to the Higher Learning Advocates Group. I'm one of the champions, and we had a chance to speak with a lot of groups from different areas that I had not had a chance to work with, and we've been asked to do some research. And I think I want to bounce off of Trustee Bello's comment. When a legislator asks you to do research, they trust you to bring that back. And so I think it's Representative Shalala's office. She asked us to do some work with financial aid and bringing home financial aid for certificate programs, which would be very helpful to us at St. Pete College. So Mike Bennett, Jackie, Erin, and others are working on that data to get that back to her. And so we're spending time in Washington as well. We had Black Brown College Bound the week after, I think, our last board meeting. Hundred and two African-American males participated, and we were ready to rock and roll, and everything went very well. We talked about the trustees' commission meeting, the Vinoy Business Partnership. We've received a lot of feedback of folks who want to follow up with us on how they can help. Mike Carroll, our board chair, asked the question in the room. Tell us what we need to do and who to contact to help. And so we did get a lot of help there, and Jesse was there, and I want to thank trustees Bello and Stonecifer and the SPC family for being there. That was very helpful. We participated, I was a part of Onyx Women on the Move. We've made three connections from Orlando that may be helping us with some resources, so I was very glad to do that. We held the MLK Day of Service Awards Luncheon, which went very well this year. We had the highest number of participants ever. I participated in the Leadership Tampa Bay Power of Access in Tampa, spent a lot of time on Tampa Bay issues, and education was one of them. And one of the ideas that Trustee Gibbons brought up in reference to the health campus and P3s, I was able to articulate that. I think I did well, Trustee Gibbons, and I believe they're going to want to adopt that as a possible solution to some of the challenges that we have. And Midlands Technical College visited us yesterday, our first day back. That was something I did very crazily, won't do it again, but they came to learn about what we're doing with guided pathways in our career and academic communities. I want to thank our deans, our faculty, our student affairs leadership, who were there to help acclimate them to that. And one of our faculty members, Raf, I'm going to pronounce it wrong, Sabio, was inducted as a chief master sergeant in the Air Force Reserves. Less than 1% of folks in America get inducted, and so we want to congratulate him for that honor. I thought that was a big deal.
That's fantastic.
So, and that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Yeah.
Madam President, on the grant for...
Hit your mic. Hit your mic.
On the grant for the charter school, is that recurring money or just a one-time grant?
I think it's one-time. It's going to help us get things started, to start up.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Public comments? I have none in front of me. Rebecca, no public comments today. We'll move to the approval of last month's Board of Trustees minutes from February 19th.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. Thank you. And now we'll move to our monthly reports, starting with Ms. Suzanne Gardner.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
There is no report this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to Ms. Kubik with an e-advancement presentation.
Good morning again. I just wanted to...
You didn't look like Ms. Kubik.
Oh, yeah. Looks very different.
It's a surprise announcement, so wanted to, I am very happy to have Sue Kubik here. Prior to my arrival, Dr. Williams was interested in thinking about a comprehensive campaign, and so Sue has over 40 years of fundraising experience, predominantly in the community college realm. She has a very long resume that she asked me not to read, and she has a really, I've gone over the report several times, and she and I are meeting later on today, and I'm very happy that she is here as part of the onboarding and looking to the future of our 100th year in the next seven or eight years. Really, being able to capture that historical event for fundraising for the college. So, Sue Kubik.
Thank you, Jesse, and good morning.
Morning.
Thank you all for having me here today, and thanks to Dr. Williams for asking me to work with your talented staff at St. Petersburg. And hopefully, I'll be able to make this work. So let's look at the structure process and campaign readiness review that I did for your institution. Want to tell you that the review itself consisted of reviewing an incredible amount of material provided by your staff, interviews with 15 of your foundation board, one of your trustees, Ms. Cole, and members of your advancement staff, and an analysis of an internal readiness survey, which is basically a look that the staff does at the historical data of your work in advancement to this point in time. It's a 10-year historical look. They put it together for me, but it allows me to see just where you were and the direction in which you're heading. I want to also give you a caveat. This report represents a snapshot in time. It was the fall of 2018, so it isn't an end-all, be-all, but it is a look at where you are at a particular point in time. As part of that, I want to review some of the strengths that I found, and also congratulate you because you are doing this internal look at, from a position of strength. Typically, when consultants are called in, it's because the situation is a mess. That's not the case at St. Petersburg. You are in a very strong position, and it's refreshing to see somebody take a look at an internal perspective of themselves while they are in a position of strength. So among the many strengths that I found here is that you have a very vibrant, very active scholarship function within your foundation. Your foundation awards close to $2 million annually in scholarships, and that is quite impressive when you look across the spectrum of community colleges nationally. You are also raising in excess of $2 million annually. That would place you in the top 35 community colleges in the country. Your assets exceed, or, excuse me, are approaching $70 million again. That would put you in the top quartile in the country. Your board giving among your foundation board is impressive, 100%. In other words, everybody on that board is committed to the foundation and shows that commitment through a financial gift on an annual basis. And you have a very talented foundation board with an awful lot of expertise. Another strength is that you have a president who is interested in your foundation and willing to work with your foundation. Now, you might think that that is a given, but in fact, that is a rarity, and in fact, too rare from the perspective of some of us who do this work. Presidential longevity at a community colleges is one of the key indicators of a top-performing, high-caliber development program. And so you have a built-in ingredient at St. Petersburg. Another part of that indicator is the interest that the president has in development. You have a president who is very interested in this work, and that bodes well for going forward. You also have rock stars among your advancement staff. They happen to be mostly women, which is not unusual. The profession is leaning that way, but you have a number of very dedicated and very talented staff, and it's impressive to see. You also have marketing and grants departments that are very well-regarded among the institution's staff. So weaknesses, masquerading as opportunities. You have some challenges which are not unusual in the community college realm. The first is that your foundation has been what I would call siloed, and whether that is intentional or unintentional, I think is an interesting question, but it was pretty much on an island by itself and not integrated as well as it could be into the college community and the college functioning as a whole. Again, that's not unusual, but at top-performing institutions, that silo doesn't exist. There are also some challenges with external communication and coordination. You have a number of direct-supporting organizations that have the potential to actually be competing with each other in the philanthropic community, and that's something that you'd want to kind of get under control. Your current organizational structure, or the organizational structure that I found here in the fall, is, doesn't help with the synergy that typically happens in institutional advancement. And when I talk about institutional advancement, when I'm talking about our communications functions, external relations functions, alumni functions, development functions, grants and contracts, when you have a well-oiled machine, all of those functions are working in collaboration with one another, and there's tremendous synergy and leveraging opportunities that exist because of that interaction. There's also a challenge with the foundation and the college interaction, and there's a lack of alignment at this particular point in time between the foundation and its vision and work, and the trustees, and what you would like to see the foundation do. There, the foundation could benefit from more planning. There is not currently a strategic plan that guides the foundation work, and that's important because the strategic plan not only guides the foundation work, it also guides the work of the staff members in the externally-related functions, so that they know that they are on point and doing what is expected of them. And there is a kind of lack of foundation board involvement in the giving process. Now, I want to qualify that in that I did, I never sensed a lack of enthusiasm for getting involved in the giving process, but there just was a historical reality that the board wasn't asked to do much in terms of the giving process. And there are all sorts of ways that boards can be involved in giving, short of actually asking for money, and in the giving continuum, there are a number of ways to involve them. And one of the kind of fallouts from that, if you will, is that we know in development work that the most effective solicitation technique is two people with one prospect, and typically, it's a volunteer and a staff member. And so, once you get your board involved in the giving process, you will have, you will see tremendous results as a result of that. So let's talk then about the opportunities that come from some of these weaknesses. First is there, I would suggest to you that there be an expanded vision for your foundation board, that the board itself become more actively involved in the giving process, whether it's through involvement in an annual fund plan with donor cultivation, donor stewardship, or in planning campaigns. There's a lot of room for board to be involved. There's also an awful lot of room for the board to be more actively interacting with the trustees and understanding the trustees' vision for this institution and helping the trustees achieve that vision. There's opportunity for more involvement with your president. She welcomes that, and I think we have to get the foundation board to a point where they are as welcoming of that involvement as she is in giving that involvement. Your board is also small for a board of, for a foundation board. The national average is 24. At the moment, you are under 17, and so there's some room for improvement there. You also have some infrastructure issues, primarily with your database. There are some changes and some upgrades that could be made, and some investment in your database in order to better enhance your program. And there are opportunities to enlarge both your giving and your donor base. You have a dormant planned-giving program. It had a very good history. It was left to go dormant. If you reactivate that, I think you'll see enhanced giving. You also have a number of opportunities in the alumni realm. Finally, as it relates to this board, there are tremendous opportunities, I believe, for better communication between the two boards, both on a formal and an informal basis. So the report that you have has some recommendations to that effect. And finally, to create better synergy between your external relations departments, I've suggested to you at least one way of doing the organizational structure that's somewhat different, and that way would have all of your external relations departments under Mr. Turtle's responsibility. So the recommendations are that the foundation board draft a strategic plan to guide its efforts, that that plan be done in concert with the college's senior management team efforts, that that plan be done in concert with the college's senior management team and with the board of trustees. One of the suggestions I made in the report to you was that perhaps you use a retreat as a venue for doing that, but in any event, it should be an opportunity for you to present the vision that you have as a board for this institution and to see the points of interaction with the foundation board and how they can help you achieve that vision. At some point in the future, I would recommend that you do, that you execute a memorandum of understanding between the two boards that clearly outlines the expectations the two boards have of each other, and then that you implement the structural changes. The suggested org chart that I gave you is one of several that you could, in fact, implement. The important part of that is the consolidation of the external relations functions under one VP. You know, consultants don't know where all the sacred cows are buried, so one of the other aspects of that org chart is that you have a number of direct-supporting organizations that have their own external outreach. My suggestion is that that be coordinated either structurally or by some other means with the institution. I also suggested you form a coordinating council so that when you are approaching the community, you are doing it in unison, and you are not competing with yourself, that you strengthen your database, and that you reactivate your planned-giving efforts. So what are the fundraising implications, which is why Dr. Williams asked me to come here to begin with? And that, I think it is too early for you to be thinking of a comprehensive campaign at this point in time until you do some building of your infrastructure. I do think it's possible for you, as a board, to say to the foundation board, "We have a shortfall of X for our health campuses building, and can you help us with that shortfall?" Because that's very targeted. It's a niche project. It doesn't involve your entire donor base or your entire database, and is something that I believe your staff is talented enough to put their arms around and embrace. And then that you look at your comprehensive campaign and the potential of a comprehensive campaign to coincide with your 100th anniversary celebration. That's the report in a nutshell. I know that you are time-sensitive, and so I've tried to give you the highlights of it, but I know you also have the comprehensive report in front of you. So if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one. Can you talk a little bit more about us competing with each other? Can you go a little deeper into that?
The direct-support organizations, the competition?
Yeah.
Typically, at institutions, there's a funneling mechanism for any approach to the community for funds. That's absent here. And so what that allows for is your direct-support organizations to perhaps be going to a particular corporation for, let's say, a $5,000 sponsorship for something, when the institution, the foundation, has targeted that organization for a $100,000 gift for something that is more central to the ongoing operation of the institution. Now, it's not to say that your direct-supporting organization shouldn't go to the community, but the approach to the community needs to be better coordinated so you're not competing with yourself, because you have the potential for allowing a corporation, a foundation, or even an individual to think they're supporting you with a $5,000 gift when what you are really hoping to get from them is a $50,000 or $100,000 gift.
Thank you.
Ms. Paul?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Kubik. As you all know, when I, I thought I did start. When I was appointed to the foundation board on behalf of the trustees, Dr. Williams and I made a lot of presumptions about how things had been operating and were not really aware of what was happening. And with Beth Warner and Mike Carroll's leadership, they really stepped up, were very open after a couple bumpy meetings, to the college's desires to have some of these changes and make some of these changes. And Sue's interviews and work really helped lay that path. And so it wasn't just Dr. Williams and I saying, "Wait, what? Why isn't this happening?" Having Sue come in and do the analysis and teach us things and the foundation board things. So one thing that I talked to Mike Carroll about at our last foundation board meeting was very specifically getting on the calendar, the joint meeting that we just heard about. When is the right opportunity for that? Obviously, Jesse being here today and regularly is going to be a great help, having some of that coordination in and of itself. But Mike and I had already talked about how we align those strategic plans, what are the giving. The foundation board, as it is made up today, is, in my opinion, appears to be all in. There's a board meeting next week, is that right? Two weeks?
Yes.
And it ends next month, and so that will be Jesse's first time formally in front of the board where we can work on some of these things. So it's been a very exciting time, and through this report also gave Dr. Williams and her staff the opportunity to rework the job description for the new vice president of institutional advancement and really refine. And I have to compliment all of the administrative staff at the college, because moving marketing and grants over to this position in and of itself was a question mark for the college, and Katie and Rita and their teams have really been enthusiastic and all in in doing what's right for the institution collectively, and it's been a nice evolution to see over the past year or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, thank you so much. Over the last six months, you schooled me and helped me understand how this process works, but you've also been very supportive in helping us get the resources needed for the college and the foundation board and the college board. We must work together. We're all in it for St. Pete College, and that's why we're here. And so I appreciate the help you've given us and the work you have done to provide the detailed report. I look forward to Jesse's leadership and us forming the right structure. And I do agree that we may have the Lepa Ratna Museum asking for money for here, and then the college is going to the same person, you know, asking for money, and that does cause a problem. And so I appreciate that, and we look forward to continuing to work. She has agreed to stay on with us, I think, for another six months or so to help us with the onboarding and continue to build the collaboration and the department growth in helping Jesse move forward. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to work with your talented team. I'm very excited to watch this progress because I think you are coming at this from a position of strength, and I think you're going to have some amazing achievements in a very short period of time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kubik. I'd like to invite up Mr. Fox, who's going to give us the proposal for the 2019-20 academic calendar.
Good morning, Chairman Stowe, Cypher. I'm Mr. Ford. Dr. Williams.
Morning.
I'm Juan Fox, as I just mentioned, and I will have a request at the end of this very brief presentation for your approval of our 1920 academic calendar. As you can imagine, putting together a calendar requires work from across the college from multiple departments, from financial aid services, student services, and many that you see listed there, as we look at registration dates, enrollment dates, when the tuition dates will happen for students, as well as major events on campus that are happening, and including our training. I've been told by Harrison Aquino that our academic calendar is our most viewed page in our website, so I'm pretty sure everyone is patiently waiting for this to get posted, as well as, because they want to know when our times offer happen as well. So the state provides us some standard start dates where they recommend when you should start each one of your terms, but they do allow you to recommend some exceptions to that, so I'm going to explain exceptions that we're asking for, the same exceptions we asked for the last five years. Our fall term falls right within those standard start dates, but our spring term, we've asked for a week in between our winter term, final winter term, and the start of our spring term, to allow some students to really be stressed from what happened at winter term, have an extra week to do their enrollment, to come and meet with our advisors, to give our deans an opportunity to review the schedules and make sure the trends are following the classes that they put out there so they can make some adjustments as needed. So with that, we are submitting this recommendation for late spring term, and that impacts how we submit that for our summer term as well, so that it falls right from the window, it's January 2nd to 11, we're two days with that Monday being the 13th for our spring term. So we've had no issues with the state as recommending and approving this moving forward. So that's my request to you. In your packet, you do have the full calendar there as well for you to review, and I'll pause there if you guys have any questions or concerns.
Any questions for Mr. Fox?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fox. And we'll move to Ms. Jeanette Hunt with a budget update this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Board members and Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
This morning, I will go through the February budget report, and also will look at our fiscal year '18-'19 year-end projections. First, taking a look at our revenue for our student tuition and fees. At this end of February 28th of 2019, we brought in $52.3 million in our student tuition, which is about 85% of our budgeted amount. And our state funding, a little under $40 million. This includes the $3.3 million of our lottery appropriation that we started receiving in February, so we'll receive that amount through June 30th. Next, in our other revenues, $3.1 million. Again, this, we're trending a little bit higher than the prior fiscal year, and that's due to our use of facility rentals. Then our fund transfers in at $1.1 million. Again, this is all in timing and due to journal entries, and we will be processing some more transfer ends in March. Our total revenue at $96.7 million. Here's our chart for our tuition, tracking our tuition revenue. This is where all the tuition is grouped in, our credit, PSAV, and our non-credit. We'll see here on the next slide, our credit tuition amount. The budget amount is $47.9 million, and we're projecting to be at $48.6 million by the end of the fiscal year. That's a $729,000 increase to the budgeted amount. Next, our post-secondary adult vocation tuition. Our budget amount is $634,000. We're expecting about $30,000 more than that budgeted amount. Lastly, our non-credit. We see here our budget amount is $2.1 million. We're expecting to be at about $1.8 million. There is a slight decrease in the variance from last month, so they are doing a little bit better. I just wanted to also point out that Dr. Williams is very focused on our workforce institute and is implementing a plan to enhance this area. Next, we'll look at our expenditures. We are 67% through the fiscal year, so you see here with our personnel and benefits, we're at $70.7 million, which is about 64%. Our current expense, $19.8 million. Our capital, $1.2, for a total expense of $91.7 million. Looking at our revenue minus our expense, we're at about $4.9 million. So now, let's take a look forward to June 30th. We wanted to just project out where we think we'll be. We know right now with fall, we were about 2.1% above our target amount. With spring, we are ahead in where we targeted, and then this also is assuming that we're flat for our summer enrollment. Looking at this particular slide, they're broken out into three streams, our revenue stream, our fund transfer streams, and our reserve streams, and projecting where we feel we'll be. So in this first revenue, this includes all of the income to our operating fund. This includes our student tuition and fees, which is about 43% of our budgeted amount. It also includes our state funding, which is about 50%, and our other revenue, which is about 4% of our revenue. In this particular scenario, we have our total revenue of $138.7 million. We're projecting to be at $138.5. This includes the $729,000 that we're expecting in our credit tuition, but remember also on the slide that we saw, a couple slides before, with our non-credit trailing a little bit behind, there's an offset there. Next, our fund transfers in. We have budgeted $3.1 million, expecting to transfer in about $2.95. That difference is $155,000. This is a good thing because that means that transfer stays in the auxiliary fund reserve account. Next, for our reserves. You're aware, over the last three years, you gave guidance that we reduce our reliance on our reserves. We've gone from $4.6 million in our reserves to $1.8 last fiscal year to $1 million this fiscal year. We are projecting this year that we will use $0 of that reserve. So next, looking at our expense projections, our personnel benefits. We have budgeted $110.36 million. We're expecting to use about $109.36 million. What we have been doing and continue to do this fiscal year is to review positions as they become vacant, looking for any streamlining or cost efficiencies there. Next, our current expense. We budgeted $29.74 million. We're expecting to spend $29.43 million. We have continued to be very intentional in our spending, and also, the offset of that is that in this fiscal year, we've transferred $3.5 million to our health insurance fund, and so with that happening, we still are in budget of our current expense. Lastly, our capital expense. We budgeted $2.78 million, and we're expecting to spend $2.54. So looking now overall, our total revenue for our year-end projection is about $141.4 million, which is about 99% of what we budgeted. Our expenses at $141.3 million, close to 99%, expecting a possible surplus of $130,000. Any questions on my report?
I don't have a question. I'll just say that with the increase we had in health costs and with our expectation of the use of reserves going down to what's now zero, this is impressive. I know it's extremely hard work by everyone at the college, but especially you all that are crunching the numbers and getting creative as to how we operate year to year. This is good news for us, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yep.
Dr. Williams, she talked about the workforce area, and you were implementing a plan. Are we out of the red in workforce yet?
No, sir.
So I noticed in the personnel report, we're hiring people in workforce, and we're not out of the red, and I wanted to get your take on that.
We are trying to backfill some vacant positions that we had in workforce. Right now, we have someone coming to help us look at the structure, the processes, the policies, and what we're doing. What we are doing right now is not working trustee givens, and so we're working on that. But we did need to backfill some of the vacant positions to do the work that we already have agreed that we're going to do.
Okay.
I'm listening.
No, I just, I mean, I would, you said you had somebody come in and do a study or something.
We're changing even.
Maybe we should just wait until after you do the study to, you know, instead of hiring more people and adding more cost to something that's already in the red.
Kind of in the red. What you've received in the report has already been done, so we'll look at what we can do going forward, but that's already been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Board, you have in your packet the human resources personnel report. We have actions both on that and the annual membership assessment for the Florida College System Risk Management Program. I'd like to take both of those together if we could. Have a motion to approve?
Stand by.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
And one opposed.
If I can, and Brian and I made eye contact. You know, one of my pet peeves is still, it's the travel expenses, not so much travel abroad, and I kind of ran the numbers. The India trip is $56 a student, or $70 per diem. Tokyo's $58 and $167. The Spain trip is pretty expensive, but they're gone for 22 days. But I still, and I supported it, and I don't even have any idea why I opened my mouth, other than the fact that Brian and I smiled at each other. It's just, the college will, at the end of every one of these requests, the college will benefit by providing an education opportunity for students to earn college credits while providing a cultural experience through study abroad. And it's the same generic one-liner at the end of all of these. And I don't know, if you guys don't want it, that's fine, but I would maybe just want another line or two as to, really, other than a generic one-liner, tell me how, you know, 24 students are really gonna benefit for 22 days in Spain. I don't know. Something to think about, but I voted yes.
We can do that.
We can add something like that, Mr. Foster. I would also suggest that perhaps at one of these board meetings in the future, why don't we bring some students in and have them talk specifically for five or 10 minutes as to what they got from the trip, because I think we'll find that they are bringing something back, but it'd be nice for the board to hear every once in a while what that is to remind us, if that works.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I don't want to have students come in here and tell us what they learned. Mr. Foster's right. Let's just put something in the packet that speaks to the issue, but also maybe, if you would like, let's provide, you know, some papers or whatever they provided for their coursework from the students as opposed to coming here in the packet, so that doesn't look like we're just paying for summer, spring break trips. I think that, it starts to, I hear you, Mr. Foster. I think you're right. We just need to provide some backup material to show that these are providing the cultural experience and the educational experiences that we say. The type of paperwork that I see when a professor goes to do something is much different than this one-liner, so they need to look the same.
I would suggest that for our April or May meeting, that we bring the international travel back and have a presentation as well to give the detail. We can definitely add the detail to the monthly meeting, but I think it would be important for you to see the difference, and even the difference in cost of agencies that we have to use, depending on where the travel happens. Some agencies work with us, and it's less expensive, and others don't, and it's more expensive. But what you're seeing in the report, a lot of that is startup money for the trip, and the college gets that money back from the student travel itself, but we could definitely do that. I'd like to ask the board to allow us, it'll probably be May, because April's pretty full, to come back in May and give you a detailed report on how this works and how it's set up.
Mr. Foster, I will tell you, though, I've been on maybe one or two of these trips, and there's no great accommodations. So, it's not like you are in a five-star hotel. Trust me, you are usually bunked up in a room with folks in dorms, mostly, sometimes actually on college campuses and other places, so. But I do agree with you in terms of the backup. Just, you need to be able to see that someone from the outside that's looking at this would not be able to tell that, so.
I spent 15 years in government, and I saw, I just, I don't, I'm not saying it happens here, but I've just seen so many trips that I didn't go on because I called them adjunctive, and I'm just not willing to spend taxpayer money on it.
These are.
On a junket. This isn't it.
Right, this isn't it. Those are student classes.
But I want a little more, I want a better feeling. Yeah, I'm not saying that.
Thank you.
I just want a little warmer, fuzzy, so I know that we're spending the college's money wisely, and that we're paying attention, and we are, but, you know, anyway. Enough said.
Understood.
Thanks for the smile, Brian. Mr. Sunshine.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Don't do it again.
All right. With that, we'll move to our consent agenda. I'd like to take this together, and if we have a motion and a second, I'll then open it up to any questions or discussion for the board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or comments as it relates to any of these items?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gibb.
On the parking garage for downtown, is there a need to move Dr. Williams fast on these renovations in terms of the downtown garage renovation? I know I've been the person that's been pushing for the downtown.
Right.
Renovation on the garage, but I think there could be another solution to, instead of the college always paying the cost of this, I think there could be another solution. I'm not, I just want to make sure that before we spend any money, we look at all those solutions.
Can we approve this, and then keep that in mind as we go forward?
But this is that we're gonna go out with the RFP process, and if we approve it, then you're gonna move forward with an RFP to.
Well, Brian, can you tell me what are some of the things we're trying to do at the garage?
I actually would like to pull the item, to be honest with you, but if y'all want to move it forward, I'll just abstain from voting or vote against it. I'm sure you got votes.
So this one is not the RFP process. This project is gonna be, you know, for a lot less than what we intended it to be. I think the total project budget was under half a million dollars.
Yeah, it's $476,000.
This is really to fix any, the structural integrity of the parking garage itself. The garage was built back in the 50s, and there are some areas of concern that we need to take care of sooner rather than later.
What are those areas of concern? Like, do we have a project report that says that there are some structural issues that have to be taken care of immediately?
Correct. So we hired a structural engineer to really assess the condition of the garage itself, and they gave us a pretty detailed plan of the areas that needed to be fixed pretty quickly.
And we're sole sourcing them?
No, we're not. This is through an ITB process, which means that we go out to bid, and then we select pretty much the lowest, most qualified bidder.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding process as it stands with new baccalaureate programs, just so that I know how it works, and I'm not sure who to ask. Maybe you're the best person. With the cybersecurity program, when we go out and we speak to USF and University of Tampa, schools that are close in proximity to us, is there a formal approval process that we have to go through with them before we can offer the baccalaureate?
So what we did, we met with Judy Genscheff. It has to be the public universities is who we have to go through, so we didn't go through University of Tampa. And then we shared with her the programs that we were asking to offer. She asked questions, and then she sent a letter on her letterhead approving those, and then we'll use that letter when we submit to the state to say this has been formally approved by President Genscheff and the USF College.
That's what I assumed. Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Williams, the state also provides a system where we have to enter, it's called a prize system. We have to enter our rationale within the system, and all the state colleges get to get in there and look at and see the program we're doing, and send us letters recommendations as well, and letters of support.
Perfect.
Not just USF.
Okay.
Thank you, Duane.
Thank you.
I like this one.
Yeah.
Cybersecurity tightly, and we're meeting.
There's a demand.
Meeting the community demand.
Right.
Like it.
Yeah, I believe that you shared with me that a cybersecurity organization in Clearwater is like one of the largest in the area.
Downtown Clearwater, a company called No Before, which is.
That just moved in.
One of the top, and they expect to employ over 1,500 people at their headquarters in the next three years.
Also, American Express has a new venue downtown, and they're looking for, I think they said people in cybersecurity, about another 200 to 300 people over the next year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion points, questions, or comments from the board as it stands with the consent agenda?
I also just wanted to comment on cybersecurity. Also happen to be located in the Tampa Bay area is the International Council for Cybersecurity Education, and it's a nonprofit organization. And I was speaking to their executive director, and I mentioned St. Pete College's program, and his response was, "Oh, you mean the one at USF?" And I said, "No, there's going to be one in Pinellas County at St. Petersburg College," so another great opportunity there. An international organization that happens to be based here in the Bay Area, so.
That's great.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved.
Open, close, open, meaning.
Close it for the public, for the proposed changes.
Right.
We will close the Board of Trustees' meeting March 19th. We will reopen for the proposed changes to the Board of Trustees' Rules Manual. You all have that in your packet. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. And the floor is yours. Dr. Williams?
Thank you. I have a nice report on our legislative updates and what's been happening in Tallahassee. First, I want to say that both the cybersecurity and the ecosystem proposal that we submitted has been heard in a hearing with the House, and so Eardan and I, we were up there for both of those to answer any questions, and there were no questions, and it went through with flying colors. So, that is something that I'm really happy it got on the books. Now, we have to do the work to keep it on the books, but at least it made it to the books, and that we're moving forward. A few legislative things coming up that I want to kind of just share with you if you're bored and you really want to read the new bills coming out. House Bill 7071, post-secondary workforce education, something that's been put together and is with the Higher Ed and Career Readiness Subcommittee. It helps us create apprenticeships, and SPC is definitely moving forward with that here at the college. It also renames the HECC Board. I know, Devaron, you know about the ATCC Board, and changes it to the Florida Talent Development Council, and the membership structure is different. And it also requires reverse transfer agreement from the SUS and the state colleges. HB 7071 is about higher ed, and it talks about the commissioner reporting audit findings that the colleges have. It increases oversight for the DSOs and is requiring foundation boards to establish thresholds of approving their purchases, their acquisitions, projects, and issuance of debt. And these are all proposals, nothing is, you know, this is just what's happening at the time. And it also prohibits the use of state funds for travel expenses by FCS for our DSOs, so that's a little bit different. It requires, it requires the Florida College Systems Institution Board of Trustees to annually report the amount of funds transferred from the college to a DSO. We don't, we're not in that arena. Senate Bill 1308, Pathways to College and Career Success, proposed by Senator Perry. It talks about the Commission of Education conducting an annual review of career and technical offerings at all institutions. So, that will kind of bring in the fold what we're doing on the academic side right now with our academic courses. And it also talks about the reverse transfer and the last mile completion. The last mile completion one is about us providing waivers for students to come back and finish their last few courses. The state colleges are struggling with that, because there's a cost to the colleges for that. And I think that's about it with what's going on, and we'll be making our next trip up to Tallahassee. At the end of this week, I'll be in Washington, and so we'll just keep moving forward to make things happen, and that's my report.
Mr. Gibb.
Dr. Williams, I know I haven't brought this up in a long time, but if you would, can I have a report on downtown and midtown? I just want to know what enrollment looks like, if there are new or any new programs or expanded programs that we've done in the past year or so. Also, I'd really like to see receipts for retorts, minority vending, what we've done.
Oh, you'll like what we've done. Perfect.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Our next meeting is April 16th, right here at the epicenter. Thank you all for being here today, right after spring break was over. We kept it nice and short for y'all. Have it going. Meeting adjourned.